Welcome everyone to the September 25th Lower Southampton Township Board of Supervisors Meeting. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before the start of this meeting, the Board of Supervisors held an executive session at 5:30 where we discussed personnel and litigation. The Board of Supervisors also held a budget workshop where we had the pleasure of meeting with the Library Board to review their annual budget. Our zoning department, Mike Italia, spoke about zoning permits and violation notices for nuisance properties, and also spoke about fire inspections out of the Fire Marshal's Department. Also, I would like to add that the Board of Supervisors were invited to a beautiful bridge dedication ceremony for Ensign Sarah Mitchell, who was killed in a training exercise in the Red Sea a few years ago. The ceremony was this past Monday. The ceremony was hosted by Senator Frank Ferry and State Rep. Joe Hogan. Mr. Castle, Mr. Perutano, and myself were honored to attend this beautiful ceremony, and as always, and it's been said before, our deepest condolences to the entire Mitchell family. Now, we will be moving on to a presentation from the Bucks County Sheriff Fred Herron pertaining to the southwest border crisis and its effects on Bucks County. About a month and a half ago, two months ago, Sheriff Herron had sent me an email offering to come to Lower Southampton to discuss this. Apparently, the sheriff has been doing this, you know, I guess throughout the area. I found it very interesting myself and educational. I reached out to my board members. They all felt the same way. And we are here today with our sheriff. Sheriff, thank you so much for coming, sir. You're a pro at this. The podium is yours. From what I understand, Sheriff Herron will be doing his presentation, and if anybody in the crowd has any questions, please, let's not repeat ourselves. There's a lot of people here in the crowd tonight, so if the question has already been asked once, no need to repeat it again, but, you know, the sheriff will be answering some questions, too. So, all you, sir. Thank you.
And thanks for allowing me to come and do this, and I'll tell you why. I don't know. I got my back all over the place here with everybody. So, and I go back to Ben Salem, right? And then I'll tell you why I'm here, and what my promise was to Sheriff Daniels, the sheriff in the county we're going to talk about in Arizona. So, for those of you who don't know me, I'm Fred Herron. I'm the Bucks County Sheriff. Can you guys hear me or not?
It's recorded. Gotcha, gotcha. I never use a microphone, but okay. Well, hopefully I won't blow your eardrums out. So, if you don't know me, I'm Fred Herron. I became the sheriff in January of 2022, and prior to that, I was in Ben Salem Township for 36 years. The last 16 is the Director and the Police Chief here in Ben Salem. And then I decided to leave Ben Salem for just time to retire and move on, and I was offered the opportunity to run for sheriff, and I did that. And in Ben Salem, I was very, very active, and active in the National Chiefs of Police Association with a bunch of committees, but specifically technologies. We've done a lot here in Bucks County. Your chief is very involved in DNA and other type of things. But when I jumped over to the sheriffs, the National Sheriffs Association, I wanted to get involved, and I got on the technology committee. And part of the requirement, so you have to go at least one meeting a year. They have two annual meetings, one in the winter, one in the summer, and one in the winter is in Washington DC. So, jump ahead to February of 2024. I'm at my technology meeting in Washington DC. My meeting ended probably 5, 10 minutes earlier than scheduled time, so I decided to go downstairs, two floors down. As always, breakout rooms, to get a cup of coffee. When I go down by the coffee station, I see a meeting room. It's huge, and people are just piled outside, I mean, trying to get in. So, it piqued my interest. So, I wiggled in, if you can imagine that scene. I snuck in to, you know, wiggled into the room, and they were talking. It was the Border Security Committee. Now, these are sheriffs all over the United States. It's a pretty big group. And they were talking about border security. I knew, just being in Ben Salem and being in Bucks County, just what everybody else knows, what I see on, whether you're watching Fox or CNN, what you hear, you know a little bit about the border crisis, but really, a lot of times, we don't pay it much attention. I was very involved in immigration issues in Ben Salem. We had a lot of crimes committed by folks that were coming across the border illegally. But still, I figured, what can I possibly do in Pennsylvania, in Bucks County? I really didn't think I could do anything to really control it. But then, I saw a slide, and I know we're on that projector there. I saw a slide up on the screen. A guy named Sheriff Daniels from Cochise County, he chairs the National Sheriff's Association Border Security Committee. You've probably seen Sheriff Daniels. He's, there's a lot of YouTube videos about him. He's very outspoken on the border crisis. But I saw a slide up on the screen, such as this, not this one. I created this slide. And he was talking about the border and the nexus to Pennsylvania, guns and drugs going back and forth, or actually coming from the border into this area. And it sparked my interest. So now, I started paying attention. The meeting ended, remember? I said it was only 5, 10 minutes. The meeting ended. I went up and I talked to Sheriff Daniels about the crisis of the border and exactly, you know, the problems that we have here in Bucks County. If you don't know this, Bucks County, the Delaware Valley is the opioid capital of the United States, primarily because of Philadelphia. All because of Philadelphia. Philadelphia is the fourth largest city in the United States. It is, for whatever reason, the center of opioid. The other issues are opioids are kind of on their way out, and we're being bombarded with other drugs now, xylazine, which they call trank, which we're seeing emergence of that. And that brings on a whole host of new problems. So, the drugs affect us all, whether it's in our families. Half of us in this room, half of the people in this room, have had some sort of drug addiction issues close in their family, mother, father, daughter, sister. I'm one. I've had it close in my family. You know, so half of us have had it close in our family. So, it affects us. And if it doesn't affect you that way, it's affecting you in insurance premiums, it's affecting you in the cost of whatever it might be, because people are stealing from stores left and right. Walmart's not out of that money. That money, that burden's coming back on you, the shopper. So, it affects us, the drug crisis, and the crimes associated with it. So, I went up and I talked to him. They started talking anymore, and, you know, time was short. He said, listen, I'll make you one better. Why don't you come to Cochise County and see what's going on with your own two eyes? You can watch a PowerPoint all you want. You can hear me speak all you want. Come down and bring a couple of people with you. So, I did. I came back to Pennsylvania. I told the Chiefs Association kind of what I found, and a couple of people were interested. So, we were able to get funded and went to, no tax dollars, by the way. People say, oh, you know, you did this with tax money. Zero tax money. It was funded outside of that. And five of us went to Cochise County for three days, and I cannot even begin to tell you how my eyes were opened. And his ask was this, Sheriff Daniels. I said, what can I do for you? He says, you need to go back and tell everybody you can on what you saw here. Tell them about the statistics we gave you. Tell them about, share the pictures that we shared with you. Share the pictures that you took on your own, and what your own observations were. We rode with their criminal addiction team that night, and share, and we need everybody to know that there's a real war going on in this country, regardless of what CNN and Fox say, whatever you watch, it doesn't much matter. But there's a true war going on in this country. And I have a turn of due respect for these sheriffs down here. This is the real deal. These are law enforcement officers that are fighting a battle, like at war, every day, with heavily armed cartel members, a very organized criminal enterprise on the Mexican border. This is just not people crying a crossover. There are people crying a crossover for the American way of life, but we learned about the groups that we see on television. We're going to talk about that. They call them give-ups. It's set up by the cartel, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. And I just couldn't believe the things I was hearing. So, we went down and we flew down to Tucson, and then we drove to Cochise County, which is the 30th largest county in the United States, and it has, we're only talking about, all I'm talking about tonight is 83 miles of US border. That's all I'm talking about. There's four, five southern border states. We're talking about Arizona and 83 miles of Cochise County, and that's where we spent our time. Obviously, if you don't know what Arizona looks like, but you can see, my pointer's not working. It doesn't work on the screen. But the lower end of the screen, I don't know where the cameras are. I don't want to walk around too much. But there's two main routes that come in from Mexico into Cochise County, and then people don't stay in Cochise County. There is a house right there on the border. It is from here to the door, almost, from the Mexican border. And this guy, he's got a house. It's a rancher, and it flies a US flag and a Marine Corps flag, and it faces Mexico. And I thought, wow, this guy's pretty, he's got, he's very, I gotta be careful what we're saying. Yeah, he's got, yeah, you know what I mean. This guy's pretty tough. I was gonna say something else, but I can't. This guy's pretty tough, and we said, does anyone have some black people crossing the border? They're like, no, they don't stay in Cochise County. They cross over. No one's setting up shop in Cochise County. They're getting out of there. That's their state meetings. And I'm like, well, where are they going? And they're going all over the United States. They're coming in, they cross the border in Sierra Vista, Cochise County. They hit to Tucson, and then the next biggest town is Phoenix, which has a large airport, and from Phoenix, they're distributed throughout the United States to all the major cities in the United States to set up shop. And then they told me one particular city that they're very interested in, and they stopped a lot of people coming from this country in South Africa, Mauritania. And what I'm saying, you draw your own conclusions. I'm not, I'm not here right or left. I'm here giving you facts. You make your own conclusions. I'm not talking about any groups of individuals. You make your own conclusions about the facts that I've learned from them, not that I've read a book, and not that I watched on YouTube or Facebook or anything else. This is what I've learned from them, and then you draw your own conclusions. But this particular country in South Africa, that they're stopping people coming across from South Africa into Mexico, into the United States, and they're heading to Brooklyn, New York. This is Islamic country in South Africa. Why Brooklyn, New York? I have no idea. You draw your own conclusion. But as they have said to me, it's not when we have another 9/11. It's not if we have another 9/11. It's when we have another 9/11. They stopped 120 people on the FBI terrorist watch list in a three-month period. 120 people, just over 83 miles of border. Now, what do you think happens if there's 120 people and they're stopped? They're turned over to the federal government, and then what happens? They're released into the United States with a court date. Not horrible yet, okay? Not horrible, horrible. At least, it's not what I would want to do. I figure, all right, a court date, what, like in a week, two weeks, a month? Five years. Somebody just put their hand up. Five years. Well, I can tell you, being here a sheriff in Bucks County, and I'm sure the chief can back me up on this, that people that are elected can't remember five days to show up for court, let alone five years. So, these people are in the wind. We're never going to see them again. So, we're all upset in the United States. You draw your own conclusions. I'm not saying they're up to foul play. Might or might not. I'm not willing to take that chance. So, I thought that was incredibly, incredibly interesting fact. So, they have a group, the Sheriff's Office in Cochise County is not huge. It's got about 110, 115 deputies. It's got about 15 to 18 deputies. They're all they do is full-time border, border activity. That's all they do is work the border. Those deputies down here, it's different than Pennsylvania, where you have local police that when you call 911, they respond. You're the Lower Southampton Police Department, not the Bucks County Sheriff's Office. But in Cochise County and Arizona, when you call the Sheriff's Office, besides Sierra Vista, there's their own police department, but it's the sheriffs that are normally handling a lot of the calls. So, he needs officers, men and women, available to handle 911 calls, but they realize that the border is such a problem that they've put officers, 15 to 18 officers just doing the border. And what are some of the things that they're dealing with? Obviously, undocumented aliens. They're dealing with drug smuggling. We're going to talk about that and show you some pictures. They're dealing with drugs like marijuana. And marijuana today is not the marijuana of 1970s. It's a whole different marijuana. It's not the same marijuana, methamphetamine, heroin, fentanyl, and cocaine. These drugs are coming in from Mexico. 80% of our drug supply is coming in from Mexico. The days of the TV shows, Miami Vice, and all those things, you know, will that come back again? Maybe if we did something about the border in Mexico. But right now, that's not, that's not our threat. Our threat is the Mexican border. Human trafficking. If you don't think of human trafficking as a lively war in Bucks County, you're sleeping. There is human trafficking. When I came from Ben Salem, we had a lot of trafficking operations, and throughout Bucks County, from the lower end, from Bristol, all the way up to Quaker Town, there's people being trafficked. And it's not just Bucks County residents. We're talking about people from other countries that are being trafficked here. And again, I already talked about this, the terrorist watch list, 120 people in a three-month period. That's an awful lot of people. Some quick borders, just some quick numbers, real quick, that I got from Cochise County. This is the whole border. This isn't just them. About 107, 1.7 million encounters. 63 of them, 63% of them are other than Mexican nationals. So, we're not talking about what we see on television. Those cowards of people, they call them give-ups. And I said, what's a give-up? They're staged by the cartel to line up hundreds and thousands of people, and when they bring those people up into the border, what do we see on television? We see United States law enforcement processing these people. It's done on purpose. The cartel set this up because what happens? It's like a hockey game when you're down, and the last so many seconds, and they pull the goalie out of the net, right? They pull all the law enforcement off the border to process these give-ups. While they're processing the give-ups, what do you think the cartels are doing? Crossing the real bad people. It's a setup. I mean, you would take it, it's like, you'd think we'd be a lot smarter than that. We should civilianize that position for processing people and not taking sworn law enforcement off the border. And those are the real criminals coming across. Those are the real bad people that are crossing the border at that time. No one crosses the border without the cartel's blessing. Now, this isn't, this isn't my information. This is what Sheriff Daniels and his crew, the men and women down here, no one crosses the border without the cartel's permission. Now, you just don't write a letter to the cartel or knock-knock, Mr. Cartel, do you mind if I go to the United States? Oh, yeah, go ahead. We'll help you get there. Yeah, we'll get you to the United States, but it'll cost you $1,000. Well, I don't have $1,000. Well, that's okay. You'll pay us back when you get the $1,000, because you're going to go work in America, the land of the free, home of the brave, and you're going to make $1,000 pretty quickly, and you're going to pay us back. Well, it takes them a lot longer to pay them back, because every day they don't pay them, it's like home charging, the interest rate. So, they never get to pay the cartel back. So, what is it you think they're doing for the cartel? Do you think they're cutting grass, or working in a restaurant, or, you know, just there taking care of their kids on the playground? No, the cartel makes them do illegal stuff in order to pay the money back. So, 63% of them is other than Mexicans. So, what's it? People are coming from other countries, whether it be the Middle East, or China, or other countries that might not be our friends, and coming in through Mexico because that's our case seal. It's like water. Water will find a way to get in. How do you stop water from getting in your basement? You put a flooding sap. You get a sump pump. You put a French drain around the house. You do all these other things to mitigate water. Could water still get into your house? Maybe, but you've taken steps. Here, we're not taking the steps that we should be taking to mitigate the problem. So, only 37% of the folks are actually Mexican, looking for that better way of life. That's 184 other countries that breached our southwest border. People are dying. When you see the pictures, it's not like here, when I cross the Lower Southampton to Ben Salem Township, I can just stand on the corner and call an Uber. They're going to ride. You're in the desert. You're in the wilderness, without water, without food, and you've got a long hike to get wherever you're going to go, to get a ride. You get picked up. There's drivers right on the side. You'll see some of the police videos, car camera videos of what happens to a lot of these people, and how these smugglers don't treat the individuals that are coming into the United States as human beings. You know, so if you're not interested in the crime aspect of it, how about the humanitarian aspect of it? How about that? There are human beings, whether legal, illegal, whether criminal or not, there are human beings dying trying to get into this country. So, we'll talk about that. Some of the folks that they stopped and identified, homicide suspects, assault suspects, these are people that, when we find them here in Bucks County, people have been extradited out and then come back across. It's like a ping pong, back and forth, and come back into this country because of borders so easily. Burglary suspects, DUI suspects, not the world's biggest crime, I guess. Weapon suspects, and sexual assault suspects, almost 500 of them. This is in about a year and a half period of time. Drugs that are coming across, about 10,000 pounds of fentanyl, we hear that on television, 180,000 pounds of methamphetamine, 86 pounds, 1,000 pounds of cocaine, 5,000 pounds of heroin, and then 311,000 pounds of marijuana. So, again, just some quick stats, and then we're going to go into some of the stuff that we observed. Between October of '21 and January of '22, that's what, 15 months, they had 690 encounters, and almost 200,000 people that got away, that ran from the police down there and got away. I just thought this was, this was on my iPhone. I'm standing on the border, and, you know, the Find My iPhone app, and I'm like, that's kind of neat. So, I just snapped it and used it. We were standing on the border. Here is US, here is Mexico. We were on the border, standing there. You know, we were goofing around, and the Cochise County deputies, like, do not cross and don't goof and walk into Mexico. It could be a problem if there's somebody on the other side. So, and they were like, really serious about it. So, you can see to the right and the left of this picture is actually the wall. It's a slant of wall. That's the old border. That's the old border wall, if you will. US border, people, most people in Lower Southampton probably have better, you know, things around their yards. But that was what separated the border until the border wall started getting built, which I did not notice, that Barack Obama actually started the border wall. I did not know that. So, Obama, his administration really started redoing the wall, and the Trump administration, obviously. This is the border wall in Cochise County looking towards California. Now, you can see up that mound, all of a sudden, the wall stops. So, the wall stops. Joe Biden gets elected President of the United States. And the wall stops. Again, you draw your own conclusions. I, you know, I didn't make this very non-political, but these are just facts. Draw your own conclusion. The border stops there. So, you know that reminds me of that movie, Blazing Saddles. Remember? How many people remember Blazing Saddles, when they got the toll gate in the middle of the desert? Somebody's got to go back to town and get a bunch of quarters. They said something else in the movie. So, that's the wall. And that's pretty far, and that's looking towards California. And it just stopped. If you see on the hill there, you see a tree protruding past the wall, up in the mound. You can see it circle now. That's a cartel lookout. So, the cartel members were watching us. We were about 10 or 12 of us, between US cops and between the Pennsylvania officers and the Arizona officers. Now, we had a test coming up in another couple of slides. I want you to figure out, see if you can figure out, who are the Pennsylvania officers, officers, and who are the Arizona officers? See if you guys can figure it out by the picture. So, the cartel, they have these lookouts all along the border, and they're watching, and they were watching us right there. No one's crossing because there's 10, 12 cops standing there. So, no one, no one's crossing. This is the border wall looking towards east, towards Pennsylvania, if you will, to the east coast of the United States. Now, you see those pipes on the left? Those are all sealed tubes that were left behind. These companies that were building the wall were very smart. They knew that in four years, there could be a whole new administration, and the wall project could stop, maybe. So, they got paid upfront 75% of the job, and they brought them out of there and left it, and that's where it sits rusting away. So, all of that stuff that we've prepaid for, 75% of that bill has been paid for, and the wall's not nearly done, is just sitting there rusting, rusting away. All right, here's the big test. Who are the Pennsylvania cops and who are the Arizona cops? That's right. The ones with the cowboy hats are from Arizona. The other goofy guys are us. So, pretty good. They're wearing cowboy boots. They told us, wear comfortable clothes. Don't, you know, don't wear goofy shoes. You can snap your ankle. So, the guys with the hats are from Arizona, and the other guys are here, your police chiefs in Bucks County. So, it was kind of funny, but here we are, standing, you're just talking with these guys, and that's Mexico right on the other side. And again, I apologize. I'm trying to get through this. There's a lot of information. I just want to go through it, because I know our time is limited. That is the beginning of a light stanchion post. Again, the electric lines are in there, but the wall was stopped, and all the construction was stopped. So, there it sits with no lights on the border. They left all the equipment behind. We left all our equipment behind, and the cats and everything just sit there with no, nobody operating it. So, everything was left behind. This is, the only thing that the US government does, and I don't know why, they did explain it to us. I couldn't quite figure it out. US government does repair the wall. So, these are, cartels are blowtorching the wall to get people through at different angles, at different points in the border, and then we go out and US government repairs it. Barbed wire on the wall. So, you know, it's a pretty, pretty secure wall if it went all the way, and you had lights, and you had officers patrolling it. When we were down there, there was one US Border Patrol officer all by himself. These are really bad people down there. I mean, this is, these people have a lot to lose with the amount of drugs. Some of the folks climbing over, their clothes get caught up on the wall coming into the United States. That's the one Border Patrol guy that we came across. And this is the wall looking to Mexico, again, miles and miles of desert on the Mexican side, and this is looking in the US side. It's, it took us from the closest town, where we left, our substation, was about a 40-minute drive through the wilderness or desert to get to the actual border. So, I don't know what that equates you on foot, but they say it takes hours and hours, sometimes days, depending on the condition of the people. The only thing they didn't talk about, so I'm just gonna, I don't have any answers to you if you ask this question, because every time I do this presentation, I'm asking the following question. They never talked about children coming across in this area. For some reason, they weren't really overrun with kids, with families, and people coming through with children. This is probably just hardcore criminals coming across. This is not, they don't have experienced kids coming across in Cochise County. So, some of you might, I got that question a couple of times, and I don't have an answer, because they say they just don't see it. There's an actual Nacca, I think the name of the town is, there's an actual real border crossing in Cochise County. They wear these shoes into the desert, the people crossing the border. It's like a rug on the bottom. It leaves no tracks, so it makes it harder for law enforcement to follow. So, they wear those, and they dump them into the weeds, once they get to an area that they can, you know, the cops are no longer trying to track them, and they just leave those behind. And we just, we found, those are the ones we found that day. This was taken that day. They just, they find them all the time when they go down there. I thought the sign was kind of amusing, you know, crossing the border is illegal. So, then at night, we rode with the interdiction team. There are two main roadways that go from Sierra Vista, from the border in Cochise County, to Tucson, then up towards Phoenix. It's like Route 10 and Route something else. And the folks will pay, this is all pre-arranged. The cartel pays, remember? They got to pay these people to have you picked up. You'll get some ID, and they'll get you out of this region, a lot of times to Phoenix International, and then from there, they get distributed either by airplane, which I don't know how they do that with IDs. I, you know, every time I go to the airport, because I got metal in me, I get pulled to the side. My wife thinks it's funny, you know, and yet these folks are boarding planes like there's no tomorrow, or by vehicle across the border. That's actually me. That's not me. I'm in the car taking a picture. There's only a handful of these cops making these car stops. They have license plate readers, like we have here in Bucks County. A lot of information is inputted that these people have been stopped for smuggling before, and the cops will get probable cause to stop the car. It's still America, and they have, they pull the car over for a reason, and then they try to find out if there's anything in the car, whether drugs or human beings. So, they have a pretty intricate, the cops, camera system that they designed themselves. I thought it was designed by a professional company. These guys and gals do it themselves, and they have about 400, 500 cameras throughout the desert, and they pick up the movements of people, and then they dispatch officers to make the arrest. It's pretty neat. You can see people smuggling. That is all filled backpacks with drugs coming across in Cochise County. This is all Cochise County. This guy's using the brushes to try to disguise, so the camera doesn't pick him up. It didn't work, just to look like a bush or something. People that hit down on fours to make it look like an animal, so that they think the camera's not going to pick him up. Their camera system is pretty intricate, and it picks them up. This is just fentanyl and methamphetamine. This is all the 83 miles of border. This is all just Cochise County. 94 pounds of methamphetamine. This is what these guys and girls seized. Here's large groups crossing the border in Cochise County. This is from Mexico, they're already in the United States. We don't have cameras in Mexico, and all the stuff that they're carrying are drugs heading where? Not to Sierra Vista. We are the opioid capital of the United States, the Delaware Valley, not Bucks County so much, but our region. I can be down in the worst part of Philadelphia from here, or Ben Salem, or Bristol, or Milton Hills, in about 22 minutes, you know? So, we are right on top of it here. That's why it's so important for us to understand this border crisis. And as they say, and I thought it was just a political line... And as they say, and I thought it was just a political line, we're all border state. Prior to April, when I went down there, I wasn't sure what to believe. We truly are all border states because all this is coming to us. These drugs are not coming from within the United States. They're coming from outside the United States. Fentanyl, you see it on television, it's coming from China, but not from China to Pennsylvania. From China to Mexico to Pennsylvania. So we need to build, we need to get a sun pump, a floating slab, a French drain. We need to do something to stop that. So I want to make sure we have time for questions. I really went through this quick. I also have my business cards here. If you have questions or if you have a group, I'm doing this stuff and like people are hosting border parties in their, or border presentations in their houses. You know, I don't mind doing this because this is what I made a promise to these guys. So here's a couple of, we're only a few, it's only a few minutes of some body camera and car camera videos. Can you just find the, if you just, oh, there we go.
Of the 406 FDY events prosecuted in Cochise County in 2023, 350 people were feloniously victimized for crimes including homicide, kidnapping, endangerment, and aggravated assault.
Zero fifteen, the car just took off. I am in pursuit.
Each month, 1,500 human smugglers are recruited to come to Cochise County and smuggle humans. They are instructed to flee from law enforcement at any cost. This threatens the innocent motoring public and the migrants themselves. To minimize this threat, law enforcement attempts to bring these pursuits to a safe conclusion. However, smugglers sometimes drive around with tired violation devices.
Zero fifteen, respond next to the scene, the vehicle has crashed out.
Get on the ground, get on the ground, get on the ground.
In the truck?
Yeah.
You okay?
As a result of the smuggler failing to stop for law enforcement, four migrants were seriously injured during this rollover collision.
There's no value for human life, these smugglers.
As a result of people failing to stop for law enforcement and continuing to pose an imminent and continuous threat to the innocent motoring public by their driving behavior, numerous Cochise County residents continue to be hurt every day. Between March 31st and December 31st of 2022, 601 people were feloniously victimized by smugglers refusing to stop for law enforcement. 13 people have died in failure to yield pursuits since January of 2021.
There are a lot of cars, trucks. Guys, there are people in the truck, in the truck.
Car's on fire.
Hey, get out, get out, come on, come on.
The statewide crisis of drivers not being held adequately accountable for their intentional actions of endangering others must be addressed. By adequately punishing those who intentionally
They're kicking this car.
... and endanger the public, we can deter other drivers from fleeing
They're red.
... law enforcement, which will in turn make our streets safer for everyone.
Get out of the car!
Yeah, this is, this is like everyday occurrence there.
Of the 400.
This is a, this is a pretty interesting one. Can you do it? I can't. This is, this is a GoPro from a smuggler, not police video.
The dirt road, the truck was too light, there's nothing in the truck bed and the truck bed slid. The truck. Can you wave at the camera?
Wave at the camera.
He's lit.
This is people he smuggled. He's a trafficker, the guy with the camera. Somebody dead.
They paid, the smugglers get them across?
Yeah, they, I don't know why it stopped.
The smuggler does, he gets them.
Gets them across and he's paid to bring them. So this particular one, see if you can get that, this is a good video. Here, just hit that again.
That's not good.
Let me, let me see. Maybe this is.
The dirt road?
So he's having the people wave to him, the ones that are alive, and then he's filming the ones that are deceased. You could see somebody there that's dead, one's alive, there was somebody there dead, there's another one dead. He just crashed on his own. But why is he having the live people wave and filming the dead people?
County.
What's that?
County.
A county? It's a business. He's only getting paid for those that he delivers alive. So he's writing off the, it's like, it's like damage dropping, you know, a crate of fruit, you know, off your truck and it's all smashed, a can of herbs or watermelon, whatever. You know, so you're not going to, you're not going to get paid for those or you're not going to be held accountable. So if he only says, hey, I only delivered three and the guy is expecting, now I gave you six, there's $6,000 coming to me. And he's like, well, three didn't make it, well, where's your proof? So they've got to do this. And they were arrested and this was confiscated by the police. And then the last video. If you could just. It's just the last one.
The vehicle was fired, the people were still in my truck, we can't get the truck up.
The truck, the truck was 29.
So this is right across the border it started.
Zero fifteen, the officer is coming out of the border, the local border deputies are getting out of the car. The herd speed is approximately 70 miles per hour, returning northbound on Highway 92. That vehicle is a small vehicle, that's a normal vehicle.
So he's terminating the pursuit, the officer realizes it's too dangerous, but the car winds up crashing anyway. It's often as the criminals don't realize that we're not chasing them anymore, they just keep going. They wind up, somebody else saw them down later, they spiked the car. You don't spike cars, do you? Sometimes. Yeah, some people do them still. Guys are giving up, the other, one car's on fire. I mean, this is what, I mean, it's just the same. But this is what they're faced with every night. And I'm not saying for theatrics, but they really are fighting a war down there. These, you know, 15, 18 deputies that have a hundred and so many person department. And you have, you have federal agencies down here, when they get involved, they're to the fact. But it's them and the Sierra Vista cops helped them out and then the US Border Patrol that's way understaffed. And the one Border Patrol agent that we talked to, he just couldn't wait to get out of the border. He just said, it's horrible down here. And they're all alone, you know, they're by themselves. The good news is that the cartels don't really mess with the cops. They just are there to do their business, they don't really take them on. If they get caught, they get caught. So, but some of them are, some of them are got a lot of drugs and depends, sometimes some people will fight that, but normally the human smugglers, and they get out because they have these cars in their license plate reader and it's the same cars coming through every night. So normally I have a little bit more slides and stuff like that, but you get the, you get the message and I do want to leave some time for some questions. It was extremely interesting, you know, I would like to go back at some point. And it's, it's not a political issue, it's a United States safety issue. This is not about politics. This is easy, this is an easy decision, you know, if I was in Washington. This ain't rocket science. Yes, ma'am.
So.
One, one second.
Oh, sorry.
Sheriff, just so, there's too many people, have everybody come up to talk. So if you could just repeat the question.
Oh, great idea, yep.
That way people at home can hear what the question is.
Yep, good idea.
Great presentation. I like the chamber event. Appreciate all your skills in sharing the larger knowledge. So based on that, I'm waiting for the good news from you as to what the plan is to address this. Because the powers, I mean, we had a bill that got killed that sounds like it may have filled some of the issues. We need resources down there, we need technology down there. You said there's already technology that seems to be working. Obviously, we need more of that. I think that even with, if we have more resources and more, you know, seasoned people like you that can orchestrate a plan.
Seasoned, is that code for old?
Experience.
So let me just see, I'm going to repeat the question. Basically, seeing the video, what can we do to help cartel this problem and keep this out of, out of, out of our county? I mean, at the end of the day, you pay me, you know, as your sheriff, you pay Ted and all the other department heads, as their police chief and department heads and council they're voted in. One is we gotta, we gotta finish that wall and we've got to put resources on the border, you know, to protect the border. And you have to hold people accountable and when people get, you know, arrested and stopped by these guys and gals who are putting their lives on their line and are working hard every day, we've got to keep the folks out of the United States and it just can't be.
But you had that planned.
Well, it's, yeah, well, hopefully, hopefully things will change again, but we have to, you know, four, four people learned to fly planes in South Florida and no one was paying attention. And they only wanted to take off, they weren't interested in landing. You know, we've seen the movies about 9/11. I mean, it's time has gone, it's 23 years ago that this has happened to us. We've got to be able to communicate better with our federal partners and we have to work better with our elected officials. And it really starts here locally to make sure that your chief and your EMS and your school district and everybody has the resources they need. It's not just about stopping the drugs, we also have to stop the need for the drugs. So it is multiple prongs here. But in, in retrospect to the border, let's get those lights on, let's get, let's get officers on the border. You pay now or you pay later? We're paying for this every day. Every single day we're paying these bills. Yes, sir?
Yes. Thank you again for coming.
Oh, no worries.
I do appreciate that. Is there a way of detecting approximately how many of those illegals are here in Bucks County?
Yeah.
For one thing. And for two, and for two, what can we do, what can law enforcement do about those illegals that are here in Bucks County? Or what are they doing about the ones that are here in Bucks County? I've been to Philadelphia on a regular basis. I've seen what the drug trank does to these people. I've seen the open wounds, the vacation, the vacated wounds that they cause in these limbs. I've seen the, the vacated arms, you know, the applications that it causes.
So, so the question is, what can we do in Bucks County to deal with this particular issue? And there was two parts to that, besides the trank. What can we do? How many people? So I hear that at every presentation. I have no reports, and I don't believe there's any, 39 police chiefs in Bucks County. There's no information about buses bringing people up and dropping them off in Bucks County. That is, that is not real that we know of. We have not seen that, no police officers witnessed that in Bucks County. But do we get people that are here illegally? We've had this for a long, long time. People that are in the county here illegally. It's not that hard. If we come across them and we arrest them, they should be deported. You know, people have come down, it'll be hard when I was in Ben Salem because I had a pretty stringent policy, I worked with ICE very regularly. To me, I wasn't picking on people that, I didn't care where they were from in the world. But it was one tool that I had that if you're committing a crime, I don't care who you're committing the crime against. Somebody, an American citizen or an non-American citizen, I don't really care. But if you're committing a crime and there's a tool out there to get you out of Dodge, why shouldn't I use it? And I use the immigration system for that. There's some ridicule out of that, but I didn't really care because all they did was get people that were criminals. We didn't go into steak houses and, and other areas that people that are in this country illegally might work. If you were in this country illegally, but you were a good, a good human being, that was not my, that was not my business, so to speak. And I say that very loosely. That was not what I was, I was interested in crime, people that are committing crime. So the first thing you have to do is make sure that we have the resources. And the laws are weak. You know, we're not a sanctuary county. There's a lot of stuff that says, you know, people say we're a sanctuary county. There was a lawsuit in Lehigh County and downtown where ICE asked the local police to hold a guy on a, on an ICE ask, on a say-so, it was nothing signed by a federal judge. This is what sparked all this sanctuary city for Bucks County nonsense. And they did. He was born in Puerto Rico. That's a US territory. He was an American citizen and he spent three days in jail. Got out, sued, won, and changed the policy. So now you can only hold if it's signed by a federal judge or an ICE detainer. That Bucks County prison will hold forever. But you just can't, can you imagine if you're driving down the street and somebody says, oh, you're from ABC country and we put you in with no documentation, no paperwork, no probable cause, no arrest warrant, we put you in jail until we figured out who you were? That's wrong. And that's what happened to this guy. So we need to fix the laws. Yes, sir?
You showed figures about drug seizures at the border. Do you have any numbers with the drug seizures in Bucks County?
Of our drug seizures? I don't, I don't have fresh numbers. I mean, I could certainly get that, but we have, there's a lot of drugs because of our location. But I don't have the numbers of drug seizures in Bucks County and you can't always tie them. I mean, we know 80% because that's just our intel from other agencies come from that Mexican border. I know of cases from Ben Salem where drugs came right from Mexico, we were the first stop because we were Ben Salem, but it was really, the big guys think we're Philadelphia.
And a follow-up.
Yeah.
You know, you read about all these drug seizures, like, oh, record fentanyl seizure. But what percent comes across that's being captured? Yeah, I mean, like, if you capture a million pills, isn't it like more than 2 million pills?
Well, you don't know that number.
The greater the number of seizure, the higher the number that's going to cross.
Well, you, it's just simple statistics. Yeah, I would, I would definitely go with that assumption. So if we get 10 pounds, chances are another 100 pounds got across. Because otherwise we'd be putting the drug dealers out of business. Can you stop everything?
No.
Probably not. Could you do more? Probably yes.
My name's Bobby Evans, I'm a resident here, I'm a community man and my blood is boiling right now. You went down, they sent you down there and in three days, you come back with a doctorate on this subject. And our current administration knows this because some guy from Bucks County learned it in three days. What the hell's going on? My toilet leaks, I fixed it that day.
I agree.
So you're telling me you know all this, we've got all this knowledge, all this information and we just got to sit here and watch it happen?
Yeah. Well, I think, I think your towns are doing a good job in Bucks County.
I'm not saying Bucks County, I'm talking about down there.
You're talking about just America in general.
The guys down there, I mean, hell.
Oh, I agree.
And the people are telling their facts on that.
What I left out of the presentation for time, time, was the building that they built all with Arizona tax dollars, no federal tax dollars. So federal government wasn't really helping them. Not wasn't really, isn't helping them. And this is, I did no, I didn't fact check them, okay? So I'm not CNN or Fox, I didn't fact check them. They told me all their stuff, all the equipment they got. And they're, they're like going to Dick's Sporting Goods, literally, and buying Buckeye cameras, you know, that you could buy when you go deer hunting. And they're manipulating the cameras, they're, they, these guys are geniuses, they should be working for Microsoft and putting them out in, in the wilderness. No, I agree, it's very frustrating. And, and, and prior to this trip, you know, I started off with, I know what I know, but I'm certainly no expert. I'm no expert today. I know a little bit more than I did six months ago, that's for sure. And that's what we're trying to do, is spread this word to have people understand. I draw no conclusions for you, you draw your own conclusion. I'm just giving you the facts that I witnessed and what I was told and what I learned from my standard. So, I feel your frustration, I'm with you. I'm with you. Yeah, anybody else?
I just wanna speak up, because I know that you're a Republican, and the Republicans are the ones that said, "No, don't pass this bill," because Trump...
Well, we're not here for political debate, but everybody, let's, 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 guys, we're not here for that stuff. Let's, let's keep politics out of this right now, this is strictly informational. But, um...
But we agree that the lawsuits are down.
Uh, not according to, not according to what you're saying, yeah.
We're not, we're not here, we're not here to, to, to solve the border crisis, okay? We're here, we're here, we're, we invited, we invited the sheriff here, we invited the sheriff here to inform our public of how this is going to impact and has been impacting our area, and what he is doing as a sheriff to make sure he doesn't do... To catch and release people, that he's trying to make sure that his influence is on the citizens of this county and not worrying about the people that are trying to be, break the laws and are criminals. And I think it's, it's, we all know about the border crisis. We can argue forever whose fault it is. That's not what we're here for. What we're here for is to make sure that Bucks County stays safe, safe. And that's what our sheriff is doing, and it's a good thing we got him.
Well, I appreciate you, yes, ma'am, you know, I... Just, it's, you know, as crazy as it sounds, I don't know if I was, I really, you know, we need, you need to support what you're doing. I know this, this administration here supports the police department. I could tell you that in Bucks County, and I know the chiefs don't like, I'm, I'm elected, so I'm an elected person. So, by nature, although I've been in law enforcement now for, going on my 38th year, you know, and 36 of that was in Ben Salem, I, I wasn't really political, but now I, I have to run for election, I gotta get voted, so it's political. Other, other side, doesn't matter who you are, I don't care who you are, just do the right thing and support the police, you know, make sure that the equipment, you know, yesterday, we sat in, was it yesterday, we were at Parks, we were sitting in, was talking about school shootings. We had a great presentation about the school shooting in Parkland, in, in Parkland, Florida, and I saw what I saw on the news, but my eyes were really opened. Things can be avoided if you put money towards it. And you have to, you know, people care about two things, their safety and their schools. Those are the two, you know, and I used to say this in Ben Salem, you know, snow will come and go. God brought it, God will take it away. You know, parks and all, and this is all beautiful stuff, but people, when you go and you look for a house, you're looking at your school districts, their squares, and you're looking at how safe your community is. You're not looking at how many parks they have, you're not looking at how fast we get snow off the streets, all great stuff. But we have to make sure that we support the folks that are gonna make us safe. And, you know, drugs is, drugs is what's driving this right now, the smother, the drugs across the border. So, you just, you keep, you keep supporting the people that make you safe. I don't wanna go into, I mean, I could certainly take the topic offline, I'm gonna leave my cards up here. I know we meet with small groups and stuff, but you, you know, you just, it would take another two hours just to talk about all the things. And I have no problem, the one thing, for those of you that know me, and a lot of the folks up here know me, Ted knows me a long time, I say what's on my mind, and I, and I let the chips fall where they may. Sometimes my mouth goes quicker than my brain, which gets me into trouble. But I would be more than happy to talk to you about it. I don't know what your time, I'll stick around, I don't wanna hold it to me, Sheriff. I'll stick around. I tell you what, we, we actually do have a time limit, I do see a hand in back.
Okay.
I'd like to take one more question from the lady in the background.
Okay.
And then, and then we will be closing this for, for tonight.
Well, thank you for the presentation.
Oh, thank you.
I think it's extremely important that our community knows and is aware. Is there a plan in regards to, like, you know, you're, you're a part of a Sheriff's Association, correct?
Yeah.
Of the whole country?
Yes.
So, is there, is there a plan there that, you know, suggestions that they have to each county?
I guess we're gonna have to see what, we're gonna have to see what the next, is there a plan that the National Sheriff's Association has? Sheriff's like Sheriff Daniels in Cochise County, in his, in his words, he wasn't waiting for the federal government, so he's doing it himself. He's 83 miles. That's, I don't know what the, I should research what the total miles are from, from Tijuana, from, from California to whatever the eastern state is, that, I guess Texas, wherever the easternmost state is.
Do they have an idea of, like, helping out, giving each county in this country?
Well, we're gonna have to wait and see what happens in a couple of months. I mean, I'll be perfectly honest, it's the only political statement I'll make, is you really have to wait to see what happens in a couple of months. But regardless of what happens in Washington, we don't, we don't, we don't sit around thinking about, well, what's Washington doing today? We've gotta react, we've gotta, you know, you've gotta, so...
And crimes.
Crimes, you've got a great district attorney here in Bucks County, Jen Shoren, she's no nonsense like Matt Weintraub was. So, you know, in Bucks County, we're gonna do everything we can, but we wanna make sure the criminals don't get here. That's really, and, you know, unfortunately, we're seeing one in Philadelphia, and that, that isn't the case here. It's a great city, I love going to Philadelphia, you know, but it's, it's, it's our case here here. I'm gonna stick around, I, the only thing, I'm gonna plug a quick commercial for our program. I left these out in front by the, the sign-in where you go to the township. We party with Parks Casino, it's called a program called Old Glory for New Glory. So, we have brand new American flags in the sheriff's office in Levittown, Dorsetown, and Quaker Town. We have three offices spread out. If you bring us your tired, worn flag that has rips and everything else, we will dispose of it properly, we will give it its disposal that it deserves, and you get a brand new flag, courtesy of Parks Casino. So, I'll leave some here, but there's some out front. It's a great program and I couldn't have, I don't have the money, I can't use tax money for something like that, so Parks Casino, as a matter of fact, we, we just started running out of flags, we're, we're on our last case, they just gave me a new check for more flags. So, when you're done here, you don't wanna go home, you could go to Parks and help fund the flag program. No, I'm just kidding. But I'll stick around for any questions. Sheriff, we, we appreciate you coming in tonight, thank you so much for everything. Sheriff, I know, I do know you need probably a few minutes to maybe, you know, take, take a point.
Break this down real quick, I'm good.
Okay, so, we'll, we'll give you a minute or so, and then we'll start public comment in about one minute, we'll give the sheriff a minute or two.
Aw, you took Jessica's picture.
Did you go across any illegal islands?
For the friends.
Resting in the, in South Town?
Yeah, for about 33 years, all the time.
How many?
There were people in the room right now, lots.
You're, you're more than welcome to, sure.
It'll be 20 hours, we'll be done.
We know, we know you're, we know you're on overtime, Sheriff.
I haven't seen overtime since 1998.
Sheriff, if, if our solicitor just gave us an idea, I mean, if you wanted to go out in the lobby or in the little conference room, and if anybody wanted to come in and speak to you, as we continue the meeting? All right, great. Once again, thank you very much, Sheriff, thank you. All right. At this time, I would like to open the floor to public comment. If anybody would like to come up for a public comment, please state your name, your address, and if you could also put it in the logbook, we'd appreciate it. Mr. Cates, public comment? Absolutely, sir.
You know, I always have something to say.
Absolutely.
Well, there's a meeting like five years ago where you didn't say anything.
And my handouts. Or, I'm sorry, I don't have one for you. I don't have enough.
Thank you.
There's two papers there. Before, before I read my statement, let me just say, say something publicly. If it looks like a duck, quacks, quacks like a duck and walks like a duck, it's a duck. This was political, and I'm really embarrassed that you guys allowed this to happen. My statement. I also believe there's a problem with our immigration system. I look forward to elected leaders who want to solve the problem and not just distort the facts to serve their own agenda. This past year, there was a real chance of beginning to solve the problem. A bipartisan immigration bill had a real chance of passage. Four courageous Republican senators with Democrats were prepared to pass a bill that would begin to solve the problem. Unfortunately, the Republican candidates for president persuaded those courageous Republicans to withdraw their support so they could use immigration as a political issue. He and many other Republicans began to distort that bill. And that would have provided, I'm sorry. He and many other Republicans began to distort what that bill would have provided. If you want to understand, if you want to understand what it would have done, look up Unraveling Misinformation About Bipartisan Immigration Bill. This was part of a FastCheck.org. FastCheck.org is a project of the Annenberg Public Policy Center. They are not, they are not Republican, they're not political. No matter your political affiliations, please vote for candidates who tell the truth and put the welfare of the United States of America ahead of their desires to perpetuate their political power. We don't need dictators, we need real leaders. Secondly, a neighbor of mine asked me to read a statement for her. Name is Connie Berrane, she used to be one of your supervisors. She lives at 115 Front Street, Feasterville. Why is the Board of Supervisors using the Supervisors' meeting as a political forum? It is clear to see that you are using this as a way to promote Donald Trump, your candidate. It is inappropriate and professional and deceptive. Most residents will be smart enough to see through your manipulative process. You have underestimated the intelligence of the members of your community. Shame on you, Connie Berrane. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cates, thank you very much. Anybody else out there tonight for public comment?
I vote.
All right.
Before you stop my clock, I wanna give Mr. Dillon an opportunity to speak. My name's Glenn Stevens, I'm from 345 East Mural Avenue in Feasterville, PA. Go ahead, Mr. Solicitor.
Public comment, sir.
I wanted to give you an opportunity.
You know what?
I didn't really expect one.
No, 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 you're gonna stop. Because I have sat here since I got on this board, I have been yelled at by you, I've been embarrassed by you. Let me, let me talk to you. We've had kids that sit in this audience, and you come up here and you yell, and it's not appropriate. I had a little kid that came here for a Cub Scout civics lesson and asked me why he, Mrs. Bowman, why is that gentleman yelling at you? It was embarrassing, and it was inappropriate, when we have kids sitting here singing and performing, and then you get up and you yell at us. Listen, and I'm gonna lay it out for you.
Please.
You're the only one that comes here and complains about this issue.
No.
You're not speaking for the other citizens of Lower South, first of all.
I'm doing the foreword.
And second of all, we're not firing Mike Italian, and third of all, get a survey.
I'm gonna keep, the survey is...
I'm done.
Keep it going, ma'am.
I'm done.
The survey is...
Stop attacking him and stop yelling and making a fool of yourself.
Mr. Petriato, did you educate yourself on, on adverse possession? Then you know, 'cause we, well, our emails, you know that the survey has nothing to do with it. Mike Italian knew the survey had nothing to do with it. I took possession of that 20 years ago.
It's been almost a year, why do you keep coming?
I'm gonna continue to come until somebody looks at the, um, police, the Cop Cam video. You watched Cop Cam video today? Look at the Cop Cam video, and it'll show Mike Italian committing a felony. He committed multiple felonies, he also committed fraud.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to interject. Mr. Stevens, I just want to let you know that my attorneys have issued you a cease and desist.
I'm gonna keep coming.
I have a thought. If you continue to berate me in public, there'll be civil action taken against you.
Can you tell me why no one here will look at the Cop Cam video? I'm guessing it's because Mr. Dillon suggested you didn't. Is that not true?
I can yell, you, you got me riled up right now. I'll tell you why I won't look at it, 'cause the first time I spoke to you, you told me that this wasn't your property to begin with, that you, between you and...
I never said that.
Yes, you did, absolutely.
I've never said that.
Absolutely, you did.
Never said that.
Absolutely, you did. And I've been sitting here now for however many months that you've been coming here, and you told me that you acquired your home off your father. Terrific. Right, between you and your father, you guys have been maintaining this piece of ground for X amount of years. That does not mean it's your property.
Sure does.
No, it doesn't.
If I was given, if I was given...
No, no, there's a legal process that you have to go through. Why did you go through that legal process?
He snuck it around, he snuck it around.
Did you go through that legal process?
How come?
Did you go through that, I'm asking you a question.
No, I did not, no, I did not.
Okay, there we go, you did not. So, it's not your property. How does that sound? It is not your property.
It is my property.
And I've been, no, it's not your property, no, it's not, and you know it's not, and that's why, that's why you refuse, that's why you refuse to get a survey, 'cause you know it's not your property.
I don't care about the survey.
Well, maybe you should, that's the problem.
Why didn't, Mike Italian...
Three minutes, time is up.
I didn't even speak yet.
Time is up.
I'll see you in two weeks.
Terrific, thank you.
Thank you so much for the attraction and the apology, Mr. Dillon. When you falsely accused me of slandering...
Okay, time is up.
Well, that was fun.
Anybody else out there tonight for public comment? And I, and I have to apologize for myself, actually, you know, getting angry at that. I apologize for the...
I haven't apologized, I'm sorry.
I certainly don't.
Hey?
It was warranted.
No, ma'am, it was not.
My name is Carol DuBosse, I'm at 100 Bowman Drive in Feasterville, Travis. First of all, I'm really, really happy that you had the sheriff come and give us that information tonight. I did not feel it was political at all, it was informative. It is a shame what is happening on our border and what is happening to the United States because of what is happening on their border. And we as citizens should be aware of it. We shouldn't be just exposed to the snippets that we get on TV of what is happening. And I think for people to come here and make it political is disgraceful, all right? Secondly, I'd like to thank Kim Coseratis for the wonderful Community Day that he put together. It was a beautiful event, it was a lot of fun, and it was very, very indicative of our area. It was people coming together and enjoying themselves and enjoying their communities. So, thank you very much. And thank you, Board of Supervisors, I don't think you make anything political here. You have always tried your best to be fair and balanced and to listen to everyone. And for this gentleman to come up here and screaming y'all at you is totally unwarranted. But thank you for everything you do, and thank you all of you for all that you do for our community.
Thank you, Mrs. DuBosse, we, we appreciate that, thank you. Would anybody else like to come up tonight for public comment? Going once, nope, one more in the back. Please state your name, your address, and if you could write it in the logbook, we'd appreciate it, thank you.
Hi, my name is Suzanne, 308 Hightsland, Feasterville, Travis. And I would like to thank Sheriff for coming over here, it's actually a big deal, and giving us this information. Thank you for everybody who's actually going to the border, although some of them may not be in Europe, so we really appreciate that part. And thank you for giving us the knowledge of what's happening. There was, of course, we all know the crisis what's happening right now on the border, but it was a very, very detailed explanation of what's happening. I really feel very bad for people who actually have to be there alone without any federal[1668.23] help or some very small federal help. And I think maybe if, I don't know, as a citizen, maybe we should call our senators or representatives in Senate or Congress, or maybe we should just ask them to come up with the border bill that includes only border bill crisis. And not to add to the border bill with help to Ukraine, Israel, or Taiwan, or any, any other issues, because everything else has to be separately presented. Everybody, I, I, I really wanna hope so, that in Congress and Senate, everybody do wanna help the border crisis. And if the border bill would have been presented alone, I'm sure there would be probably majority, definitely the majority going for it, and it would be probably already there. And those poor people that we saw, that they're fighting alone with their own target, whatever they're purchasing their cameras and help, would not fight alone. They probably would have had help by now, and obviously the border wall, you know? And as a foreigner, since I wasn't born here, I'm here for 30 years, I have to say that what I see what's happening to this country right now, and it's not, I'm not talking about politically. I'm just walking on the Bustleton Avenue, I'm walking everywhere, and you know, there's a lot of issues that, the police officers, they're not, they cannot do everything, you know? They're afraid to do something now, because if they do, they might be punished for it. So that's why I just wanna thank for the representation, for the presentation, actually, it was great. And there was absolutely nothing political until some comments came up. So that's why, thank you very much, and I really appreciate every single thing that we ever, we need to bring this up, this information to the TV, Fox News, CNN, whatever, everybody. It's only a small community. Yeah, we will be talking about it, but country needs to see this, and they don't, unfortunately they don't. But thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you very much. All right then, then we will be closing. Public comment for this evening, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Line item A, approval of moods, September 11th, 2024. B, approval of accounts payable, September 25th, 2024. C, approval of certain reoccurring monthly bills, September 25th, 2024. D, adopt resolution 2024-35, authorizing the submittal to Bucks County RDA municipal grant program for the proposed purchase of an ambulance. E, adopt resolution 2024-36, authorizing the submittal to the Bucks County RDA municipal grant program for the proposed purchase of three police vehicles. And F, adopt resolution 2024-37, authorizing the submittal to the Bucks County RDA municipal grant program for the proposed purchase of a Mastic mixer. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the consent agenda for September 25th, 2024.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Perrotto, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Line item two, consider authorizing the advertisement for ordinance establishing a volunteer service tax credit incentive. Mr. Ryan, sir.
Yeah, this advertisement is to establish a tax credit for the volunteer firefighters and EMS workers living in the township. I'd like to do a special thank you to Bill Ottinger and Cindy Bowman for giving me guidance in creating this ordinance.
All right. So I know the board is familiar with it. Would anybody like to, you know, Mr. Ottinger, you know, your hands long with this, would you like to also give the, the public a little more of a background?
So this is basically incentive for volunteers from the fire company and the rescue squad to get a little bit of a tax break or an EIT break to better get new members or retain members they currently have. It's a give back to the volunteer services, it's something that's not new to Bucks County. We're just trying to get up the par that what most municipalities are already doing. So this is a great thing for the community, great thing for our volunteers.
Great, all right, thank you very much, Mr. Ottinger, for that. So the motion would read, the motion would read to, let's see where I am, motion would read to advertise the, authorize the advertisement of ordinance establishing a volunteer tax credit incentive. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger, any further discussion?
I just wanna say Nick did a lot of legwork on this, he put a lot of time and a lot of hours, he researched it, so thank you for all your hard work in making this pass, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, great job, Nick.
I just wanna add that anything we can do to supplement and support our volunteers are greatly enhancing, excuse me, enhancing our township. And if we're forced to come to the point where we have to do a full pay fire service, this is gonna seem like peanuts.
Right.
In comparison. So anything we can do to encourage our volunteers, I think is well worth it. And I'm gonna thank Bill and Cindy who were driving this, as well as our administration for getting it done, for putting it on the books.
Very good. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Line item three, consider authorizing the advertisement for storm sewer and sanitary sewer relining project. Mr. Everett, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. We're seeking authorization to go out to bid for a project to line approximately 375 lineal feet of 18-inch CMP and 220 lineal feet of 8-inch vitrified clay sanitary sewer pipe. The storm sewer is off of Lingwood Drive and it goes to Ross Drive. This has been an issue for the last few years that needs to be repaired. The other sanitary sewer relining is in Richland Road. The Public Works doing their annual video inspection found a large break in the sanitary sewer that's allowing water to infiltrate into the sanitary sewer.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Everett. So the motion would read to authorize the advertisement for storm sewer and sanitary sewer relining project. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Castle, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Line item number four, consider authorizing the township manager to sign the worker protection form for the recycling grant. Mr. Gallo, sir.
Thank you, Board Chair. This is just, how do you say, it's something that we've done in the past, this is dealing with the 904 recycle grant for, from the Commonwealth. It basically stipulates that the township is in compliance with labor and safety laws. And so I'd be seeking permission from the board so I could sign it.
All right, very good, thank you, Mr. Gallo. So the motion would read to authorize the township manager to sign the worker protection form for the recycling grant. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Castle, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto, I believe, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Line item number five, consider approval of the purchase for stash, for a stationary tag reader at Bustleton Pike and County Line Road. Chief.
Yeah, we're seeking to get some funding for this. We have a current one at another location attached to Wall Street Road. We've recovered several stolen vehicles using that thing, people with warrants, things of that nature. Bustleton County Line is the escape route back into the city, and it just seems sensible we have something down there for investigative purposes. Plus, we can see stuff coming out of the city. It's criminal work.
Sounds like a terrific idea, chief. So the motion would read to approve the purchase of plate logic license plate recognition camera system for the cost of $35,040 for a five-year contract. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Perrotto, do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman, any discussion from the board?
Yes, chief, I'd just like to reiterate for the public that this is for our police to be able to properly investigate, we're not, this is not a traffic camera setup.
That is correct, this is for criminal work. It does tell us if a car comes through, if it's expired tag, or if the driver has suspended driver's license, but I think everybody wants us to get those guys too. So it's a good piece of equipment.
Thank you, chief.
Sure.
Any, any further discussion from the board? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Line item number six, consider authorizing the advertisement for the, for the scale, for the sale of truck scales on municipal bid. Chief, once again, sir.
It's some equipment that we're not really using right now. We'd like to probably get some money for it while it's still serviceable. We did have some, some interest in it. I'd like to get authorization to put the scales on the municipal bid with the starting bid of $20,000 to get rid of this equipment.
There's a minimum, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Is that gonna be subject to the board's approval? We're not gonna let him go for a couple thousand?
That's, I, I would avoid that, I would, I'd avoid for at least $20,000, probably more.
So the motion is to authorize the advertisement for the sale of the truck scales on municipal bid with a minimum acceptable price of $20,000?
All right, so the motion would be as stated by our police chief and solicitor. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ottinger, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Line item number six, discussion about potential adjustments to the 2024 road paving program. Mr. Everett, sir, I think we're gonna throw this one back at you.
I think it's gonna be between me and Rich. So as you know, the 2024 road program went out to bid, we received bids, there was 13 roads on there that the township awarded. During the pre-con meeting that was held approximately last week, after, after that meeting, there was a walkthrough of all the roads. It was noticed that there was construction on a bridge on Sterner Mill that is before Fizano Brothers Concrete. And there were some concerns that the heavy equipment that would be on that road would kind of muck up the new pavement. With the end, being the end of the year, concrete won't, asphalt won't cure quickly. So our suggestion was to hold off on that portion of Sterner Mill Road until next year, and then use that funding for additional roads in the township. The Public Works Director suggested that we use that money towards 150 feet of Summit Road. During some discussions, it was determined that that portion of Summit Road is actually in Ben Salem. The, even though most of the residents that use that road are in Lower Southampton, that small portion between Park and Bristol is actually Ben Salem, as far as we can tell. The old liquid fuel maps that we go off of, the one that, that was used was 2012, it showed the township used that, it was part of their liquid fuels. The one that was issued in 2018 does not, but it also does not show Ben Salem using as liquid fuels. So the, the board should talk about using the additional funds to pave additional roads. The other, I don't say issue, but the other thing to consider is that Ponderosa was recently, had utility work in there, that was done by Pico, and as part of that utility work, they mill and overlaid half of the road to the center line. So that road was part of the road program, so we made the suggestion that only to mill and overlay the half that is not done. The reduction of Sterner Mill and half of Ponderosa, it's approximately $50,000, that could be used towards, you know, that was budgeted and approved, that could be used towards another road in the township.
Boy, Mr. Everett, I'll, I'll chime in first. I mean, the first thing I think of is with Summit Avenue. You know, 2012, it was hours, 2018...
So it was, that's the way, it was on the liquid fuels map and the permit map. So there was revision in 2018 that took that 150 feet off, but it's not showing, it was originally shown in Lower Southampton, that there was that responsibility.
Doesn't show for 2024, who owns it?
Well, that hasn't been revised since then. So, but according to liquid fuels map, nobody's responsible for it now, because it's not in a Ben Salem township.
The road is owned by Ben Salem, but it's compensation for maintaining it, so...
I don't see any agreement, kinda like we had for Stump Road, there was agreement between Upper South and Lower South to pave Stump Road. There's nothing that I'm aware of between the two townships for that portion of Summit. Rich has been here 36 years and he said that, you know, he's, the Public Works is, they plow it and they, you know, repair potholes. So, you know, it's a decision for the...
I'm sure if we reach out to Ben Salem Township and say, hey, would you like to take care of this?
Rich, I think Rich tried to, Rich tried to get a, have a discussion through with somebody from Ben Salem, and I don't think that he had a return phone call.
There's, there's no reciprocal properties between us that we could trade off on like we do with Stump Road?
There's two lots that are in Ben Salem, according to the county parcel map, that are on the intersection of Bristol and Summit, and then everything else is, you know, like I said, it's 150 feet from Bristol to, to Park that is essentially in Ben Salem.
And that, that road is, it's bad.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm familiar with it, it's, it's bad.
Yeah.
I just, I...
Well, our residents use that, and, you know, maybe we could have discussions for five or 10 years from now, but I think it should be paid for our residents' a vote for debt that use that all the time.
I, I agree, I mean, but, I mean, are we allowed to do that, though, if it's...
You probably just can't use liquid fuel dollars.
Yeah, yeah, it would be out of the township's general fund, or whatever funding that, that the township has. We did get a price from the contractor, it's, it was $22,000, $22,900, which is less than the Sterner Mill provided approximately $8,000.
Mr. Gallo, I'm looking at you, sir, is that something that we could...
I, as far as not using liquid fuels for that, yeah, we, we could handle that component.
What are we gonna do with the, if we don't spend that $22,000, where's that $22,000 gonna go down?
You guys have to make that decision, I mean, as far as Public Works.
It gives a lot more... From what I understand is you're telling, you're taking $22,000 out of the general fund to pave Summit.
No, you're taking it out of the bond dollars, paving dollars. You got...
Not liquid, not liquid fuel money?
For that particular instance, you're not using it because it's not potentially eligible for liquid fuel reimbursement.
Yeah. So what are you gonna pave with the other $50,000?
We'll have to figure that out. So it would be, it would be whatever the township would wanna do. So Rich made the suggestion manor, as it was stated in my memo, that portion of, we could use that $50,000 to do a portion of manor, if that's what the board wished. We don't, I asked, we haven't asked the contractor for a pricing, but, you know, the amount, manor's long enough that we could spend $50,000 to re, to mill and overlay it.
Sure. I mean, how does the board wanna proceed with this, then?
I, I would approve the manor and I would defer to Mr. Dillon before we did anything with Summit.
Okay.
Well, they've already determined it's not liquid fuels, it hasn't been registered. If we've always maintained it and plowed it and everything else, you've acted as if it, if it's your own, I don't think Ben Salem's gonna protest and it's benefiting your residents, so... But wouldn't, since we're not taking it out of the money that was originally approved, do we have to vote separately on Summit to take it out of the bond fund, then? Because...
It's a different line item.
It's, it's, it's a different line item in the budget, where the money's coming from. It's probably would be, be better for Joe if you did it that way.
Two motions.
So...
Need to pull out...
Mr. Dillon, you're, you're the motion master here, how should...
We don't have, we don't have an estimated amount of road yet, though.
We're gonna be using...
I thought he had said that they believe with the $50,000 it would...
It's, it seems to me that, you know, adjustments have to be made in the field in a situation like this. I think they were looking for direction from you as to what they should do, and... So I think you, I'm, I'm not against reminiscing the issue. It's, it's, I don't believe we have the, the, the proper motion in front of us in, in order to do it, is what I'm getting at.
You need to rewrite the motion, here.
Wait, is it something?
The dominant amount of money is bond dollars that are being used. There's a limited amount of liquid fuel dollars that we're using in this respect of use. So it was about, I think, like $175,000 off the top of my head is liquid fuels. The rest is basically bond dollars that you, we already segregated.
So I think the motion is to substitute, as part of the program, road program, substitute manor...
Summit manor for Sterner Mill and a portion of Ponderosa.
But they want separate menu, separate motions for Summit, so it's a substitute manor avenue for...
Sterner Mill.
Sterner Mill to be paved out of the 2024 road program. That's one, somebody, so moved, you know?
So moved, aye, I will, the motion as stated by our solicitor, Mr. Dillon, and I will make the motion for that, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Perrotto, any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero, and then for the second part.
Is to authorize the paving of a portion of Summit and the funds to be taken from...
The bond fund.
The bond fund.
All right, so the second motion for line item seven, as stated by Mr. Dillon, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Castle, any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes. Yes.
Before this gets approved, is there any repercussions from Ben Salem Township if we pave their road?
Good question.
So, I mean, Public Works says we've been taming this road for years and it's a responsibility that we've assumed and plowed and we've triggered it as our own. I mean, I think.
The next question is, when we do this and we're doing, make this correction, we then have to make an application to, for liquid fuels to get paid on that road then and claim it. If they're not claiming it, then we will. We need to claim it.
Yeah. So does, can we still follow?
I don't think that has to be part of the motion. That's a better strategy.
Okay. All right, then. So do we have any other questions on the motion?
Doing the paving.
All right, seeing no other questions, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to the manager's report. Mr. Galdo, sir.
Thanks a lot, Rich. Just briefly, I just wanted to go again, Bucks County Water and Sewer again is doing some flushing exercises. So running from the 23rd through the 27th through the 30th and through the October 4th. So just an FYI, again, if you got any cloudy water or low pressure, please call, make sure you call Bucks County Water and Sewer, 215-343-2538. My eyes are failing, sorry. Again, Play Wiki event, Play Wiki Farm Oktoberfest, that's Saturday, October 5th, from 12 to 4:00 p.m. Basically, again, music, I believe the band in question is called The Fog. You got beer garden, children activities, moon bounces, pony rides, Rich likes that, vendors and more. And that's all I have but you.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Galdo. All right, ladies first, Mrs. Bowman.
All right. The fire companies, Lower Southampton Fire Company and Feasterville Fire Company will be holding their annual Fire Expo on Saturday, October 12th. There is a new location. It is from 12 to 4 at Pecessing Middle School. It is a free event for all ages. There's fire demos, safety education games and giveaways. So please come out. Again, new location for the Fire Expo. It will be held at Pecessing Middle School. Also wanted to thank everybody for Community Day. It was a lot of fun, everyone that came out and worked. All you guys that gave up your Sundays, thank you so much. Public Works and everybody else, Mayan or Nick was there, Walt was there. So thank you so much. It was a fun day. Thank you to everybody that attended and everyone that gave love on my dog. That was awesome. So, listen, we're all part of the same community. I don't get paid to sit up here. I really is.
Yes, you do.
Well, no, not really. Not, yeah, all right, whatever. We get a stipend. So peanuts, I get paid peanuts. So I just really am like shocked, like people continue to come in here and just disrespect and think they're sticking up for the community and they're yelling while kids are in the room and, you know, accusing people of different, doing different things that never happened. And it's got to stop. Like if you have a problem, be reasonable, be rational, like let's talk it out. We give you advice, we expect you to take it. We're not just telling you to do something because we want you to go waste $100 or $200 on doing something for, to prove your property line. We do that because we're giving you advice on next steps to take. And it just, it's got to stop. If you want to come here and you want to yell at us, like I have no tolerance for it and I'm sorry, but I'm going to tell you about it because I live here too. I don't go to your house, I don't go to your place of business and I don't yell at you. I don't put crap on social media, bad mouthing people that are serving their time. I've been here since 5:30. I got to get up at 5:45. I got back to school night till like 9 o'clock tomorrow night. You know, it's, have a little respect and most people do, but I really don't have tolerance for the ones that don't. And I'm going to tell you about it. And I have no apologies for that. So with that, peace out, have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Mr. Parrotano, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also want to thank Matt's and Rich's staff and everybody that helped pull off Community Day. It was a great event, beautiful day, couldn't ask for a better day. I want to give some credit to our own Mr. Koutaradis who really pioneered this event and really took it under his wing and has turned it into what was originally just a bring out for the blue, but to turn it into, you know, what it turned into, it really takes a lot. You know, I've been an elected official, serving with privilege from my community for about 11 years. And one thing I've learned, there's a couple constants in government work, whether it's, you know, locally or maybe even if it's at a higher office. One of them is, is no matter what you do, somebody's going to accuse you of doing something else. Doesn't make a difference, doesn't make a difference what it is or isn't. Everybody's entitled to their opinion and I fully recognize that and I encourage it. I accept the fact that government is messy, you know, and it's just the way it is. It happens to be that way, you know? Some people want to scream politics and that's fine, that's your opinion. I accept your opinion, you know? Doesn't mean it's true, means what you think and I move on from that. Doesn't make a difference. We can sit here all day long and argue about who did this, who did that on the border, who did what on the border. That's not what we're here for. And the sheriff was here by our invitation to give us something that is impacting us. Okay? This is causing a problem in our community. Now, unlike the other 50%, I unfortunately happen to be in the same 50% as Sheriff Heran is, that has touched our house. And I can tell you that it is terrible and it's a hell of a thing to go through and you never get over it, you just go on. And you just wish that it never happened and you hope it doesn't happen to anybody else. And to sit here and talk about the politics of things that are affecting people's lives every day and say we're doing it because it's political, you know, fine, that's what you want to think? Fine. I'll tell you something political, all right? All right? Governments shouldn't be spending money to fix governments' problems. Didn't have the problem four years ago, we got it now. That's political. But that wasn't what this speech was about, okay? This speech was about what is happening and the real truth of what's happening down there and hell, it's migrating to our community. We don't have the power to stop that, but we do hope that we have officials that are on the ball. Locally, we can't do anything about the problem other than do what he said, support our local law enforcement, and that's not an independent problem, it's not Democrat problem, it's not Republican problem, it's a community problem. We have, don't support police, your community dies, okay? You can see that's what happens in the big cities. We're lucky enough that we have a tight knit community and we have a well-trained police force here, we're good leadership and we have a good leadership at the county level. And I'm sure there's plenty of state and federal ones that are great leadership too, okay? But that's not what it's about. You have to be informed to know how to fix the problem and protect yourself. And I was glad that Sheriff Heran was able to have those experiences so he can bring them back and relaying them to us. So thank you so much. And also, I did participate in the bridge dedication, 213 for Sarah. I knew Sarah, I coached Sarah, a beautiful human being, a great family, another tragedy, but I really believe there is some solace in memorializing that memory and being there to stand up for other people that want to know that there are people in this world that are willing to give the ultimate sacrifice and serve. So thank you.
Beautifully said, Mr. Parrotano, beautifully said. Mr. Ottinger, sir.
Well, I'm not going to follow up like that, but.
[laughing].
Only thing I'm going to say is budget season's here. I'm going to tell everybody that I'm going to support the essential services for the township. Obviously, we're going to put the departments to task for tightening up your belts where you can. And thanks for coming out and have a good night.
Beautifully said, Mr. Ottinger, beautifully said. Mr. Castle, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank everyone that's in our audience tonight for coming out and those who are watching at home, thank you very much. We hope you weren't bored tonight and we hope you learned something in all aspects of our meeting. I want to thank Sheriff Heran for coming out on his own time tonight and share the horrors. I spent 25 years fighting crime and, you know, crime knows no boundaries. It doesn't care whether you're in Bucks County or Philadelphia or the United States or Mexico. There's evil people in this world and the only reason why you're going to be able to sleep tonight is because there are six officers working tonight around the clock and there's about eight officers who at a moment's notice, when their phone rings, is going to come out and clean up, you know, a mess that someone made. So I'm grateful for our police department and we have a great police department. And you'll never know about 99% of the stuff that goes on because it doesn't get talked about. And it's sad, but that's reality. Please sign up for emails. You get one email a week, lowersouthampton township.org. I read stuff all the time on social media, asking questions, what happened? It's information that we give out every week, so please sign up for that. We have some great fall programs in our Parks and Recreation. They are listed on the township webpage under the Parks and Recreation. One specifically I want to mention is October 5th, we have an Oktoberfest at Play Wiki Farm. Sadly, there was about four weekend events over the summertime that we lost out on due to weather and the Weather Channel says Sunday, I'm sorry, the 5th, we're going to have great weather, so I hope everyone can come out. And I was honored to be at the Sarah Mitchell Dedication of the Bridge. Unless you've lost a child, and I have not, you really don't know what goes on. And there are people in this room that have. And serving your country, you know, if it were up to me, I'd make it mandatory, but it's not up to me. And there are people who leave home and go to a foreign land so we could sleep at night and so we could say what we want. So you can never thank the families who have to endure what their children go through. With that, Mr. Chairman, you did a great job over the, our Community Day and you've been involved in numerous things, working on these behind the scenes, and I see what you do. So thank you.
Uh-oh. Yeah, I don't really know if I like how he put that.
It's a little creepy.
So first off, Community Day was an incredible, incredible event. There's a lot of faces out there today and they were there on Sunday. It was awesome. We estimated over 1,000 people. It's growing. You know, the year before, we had, we estimated about 600, so, you know, 1,000 people, that's a great jump. As great of a day it was, we can always do better, but let me tell you, I'm getting a lot of, you know, accolades for this. Small part of it was from a Mr. Mulholland, Mr. Galdo, Mr. Coppins, Chief of Police, Mr. Ryan, everybody. Everybody put so much effort into this, you know? I mean, really, it takes, there's a, an old saying, it takes a village, right? Takes a village to raise a child. Well, we didn't raise any children that day, but we did have a heck of an event.
We dunked a lot of firemen.
And we dunked a lot of firemen and we raised a ton of money primarily with the sale of banners. That money is going to be split between our four first responders. I believe the, it'll be sometime in October. Joe, do you have any type of, I know it might be still a little off, but do you have any type of idea how much money we cleared?
I believe probably around three, to be honest with you, somewhere around in the area. So it's a slight increase over the last years.
Okay. That's terrific. Not three total, you're talking about 3,000 per, right, right, not three.
Fire, three for the E and I said, three for the child.
That's terrific. So I mean, you know, as this grows every year, hopefully it will continue to grow. And as everybody else stated here tonight on the board, you know, we want to thank our Bucks County Sheriff for coming out. And at this time, can I get a motion for adjournment?
I'll make that motion.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Mrs. Bowman, a second by Mr. Castle. No discussion needed, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you very much.